All righty, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting. It is Monday, March 2nd, 2015, 6:30 PM. We have four members present this evening. Deputy Mayor Drago sends her regrets, but she is not feeling well at all. So we're probably, for Councilman Schenk's sake, glad that she's not sitting next to him tonight. But we will continue on and we certainly wish her a quick recovery. Before I move on with the agenda, I just wanted to ask the council, we're going to add, if it's all right, a ceremonial item. We're going to call it number 1A, and it's Chief Chudnow's item. And then, Mr. Groot, you had something you wanted to ask us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'd like to move item 14 under resolutions to be item 11A under public hearings without objection.
Any objection for any of the moves from council? No. All righty, so we're going to have a 1A, and then we're going to take 14. We're going to move that over to 11A. Mr. Groot, when we get up to that, just send me a reminder if I miss.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. All righty, with all of that being said, first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Groot, since you're over there, why don't you lead us in?
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. And I see we do not have Chief White this evening for the invocation, and it is my understanding he has a wedding on Saturday?
Yes, sir.
Son or daughter?
Son.
Right. Sons get married on Saturday, so we wish the White family much luck. Mr. Cobb, will you do the invocation for us, please?
Yes, Mayor, I'd be happy to. If you would like to join us in prayer, please do so. Father God, thank you for this wonderful community we call home. Thank you for the many blessings that you've bestowed on us through the years. Thank you for this day, Lord, that you blessed us with the wonderful Florida sunshine. We ask that you be with our neighbors to the north who are suffering under the bitter cold and the snow, and that you will bring them a ray of sunshine soon. We ask that you be with us tonight, Lord, be with our council, give them wisdom as they deliberate on the various items on their agenda. We ask that you be with all of us here tonight, Lord. We ask you bless this meeting and bless us on the way home. In your name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Cobb. All righty, our first order of business tonight is a presentation from Seminole State College. So why don't I turn it over to Dr. Ann McGee?
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. I'm being joined by Randy Palowski, who's the acting dean of the Oviedo campus, and you also have Jim Lee, who is head of our law enforcement program here tonight for a different reason. We are 50 years old this year, and so I get to tell you that in those 50 years, we have awarded 86,000 credentials that range from high school diplomas to now bachelor's degrees with our five bachelor's programs. When I came here 19 years ago, the Oviedo campus was really my first order of business, and so it seems appropriate to be here tonight and to be joined by Lonnie Groot, because without Lonnie, you would not have that campus, based on the lawsuit that we were going through with the homeowners. So very instrumental in making that happen for us. And now we've been your partners since 2001. There are approximately 4,000 students that attend classes. And having driven here tonight from a different part of the county, I'm very glad we have the campus out here, because otherwise, we would not have a way for students out here to really go to college, because it is traffic-intensive in our county now. So it's my great privilege tonight to present you with this, which is our 50th anniversary plaque, and we hope that you will display it proudly. You have pictures of all of our four campuses, so one of them should definitely look familiar to you, and then a picture of one of our graduates in the center, because students is truly what we are all about. And I'm very sorry that Deputy Mayor Drago is not here tonight, because she served as well as a trustee at the college and did a lot of good for us during her time on the board. So Dominic?
Why don't we all just come on down? Next item is now yours. You should have just stayed back.
Evening, Mayor, council members. Tonight, the members of the board members of the Oviedo Police Foundation have a little presentation to give you, so I'm going to turn the microphone over to them.
Okay, great. Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you so much for the opportunity to come and speak with you tonight. I'm Jim Lee. I'm representing Matt Schwartz, our chair, who was unable to be with us tonight. He's out of town. But on behalf of the Oviedo Police Foundation, which is a group of volunteers from the city which came together to give back to the community and say thank you to the men and women of our police department for what they do. And we try to support them as much as we can. It doesn't certainly replace any of the budget that they have, but it's to offer training and educational opportunities that would go above and beyond what they would normally have. We also try to support them in the time of unexpected financial need if they should find themselves in that situation. We certainly appreciate your support, and as a token of that support, we'd like to give you tonight a foundation tee-shirt for each of you.
Very kind of you. Well, now, if the councilwoman's not here, she's not going to get the tee-shirt, though. I think we can make sure it gets to her. Thank you.
Again, thank you very much.
Now, you know, gentlemen, everything that you do and the events that you hold, and we've all been at one or another, I mean, it is just outstanding that you take the time and the effort to provide those little extras, as you said, that the police department needs. So we really can't thank you enough.
Mr. Mayor, why don't we introduce the other members of the committee?
Yeah, why don't you introduce everybody? Charlie Krampf. Buddy knows Jeffrey. Yeah, he's on every billboard around town. You want us to come on down with the shirts and get a photograph? Okay. All right. I want you right there in the center, and I'm just going to go a little bit to the right. Come up this way. Everybody, just move all this way. A little bit further. I see this slide. Right. Just that. I say that. Yeah, I heard that. Yeah, I heard that. Thank you. Now, again, thank you so much. All for today. Thanks, sir. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All righty, and so moving along, we are now up to item number two, which is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Mr. Cobb, why don't I turn this over to you?
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, Mr. Boop put a copy of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which we all finally call the Capper, into your mailboxes. Tonight, Ms. Kelly Leary from the city's auditing firm of McDermott Davis is here, and she has a PowerPoint presentation to present to you. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Leary.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, everyone. The audit went great, as usual. Finance Department is very cooperative, and they always manage to get everything we need. This is a huge document, and I'm just going to briefly go through it. And there are some sections in the introductory section.
Actually, everybody in the audience is hoping you would go page by page, word by word. No?
Yeah, let's see. It's 150 pages, isn't it?
There you go.
It's about 153 pages.
We got time.
You know those little yellow and black books you got in high school and you didn't want to read the book?
That's okay.
Right.
In the very beginning, in the introductory section, next slide, please, there's a transmittal letter, which is on the city's letterhead.
All righty, well, while they're working on that, I'm going to continue.
Okay. The transmittal letter is the first document in here, and it's on the city's letterhead. And the city's, it's signed by the city manager and the finance director. And in this transmittal letter, they basically highlight all the accomplishments during the year for each department within the city. And so I will let you all read that at your leisure, because there's a lot of things that was going on in the city, as I'm sure you well know. And after that letter is the certificate of achievement, which the city did get again for its 2013 audit report. It was submitted to the GFOA, and it met all the criteria, and it did get the certificate again. And then after that is our independent auditor's report, which just outlines what management's responsibilities are during the audit and what the auditor's responsibility is. And when we're all done, basically what we're saying is that these financial statements are fairly presented, fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Let's go to the next slide, please.
I'm not quite sure it's moving along yet.
No, it is. She got to the next slide. In addition to the main independent auditor's report, I'm not going to spend a lot of time, but in the very back of this whole document, there are several other auditor's reports, and they're on the single audit. You all had state grant money that subjected you to a state single audit. And there's also other compliance reports that basically say that the city is in compliance with laws and regulations that pertain to municipalities. And we do have in here also a management letter that's required by the auditor general. And we did have one recommendation this year that's in the letter, and that is that the city store periodic server backups offsite. And management agreed with that recommendation. So, but other than that, the letter states that the city is in compliance with the rules of the auditor general. And the last bullet point on the slide is that there is a new letter we had to put in here this year, that the auditor general requires that we state whether or not the city is in compliance with Florida statutes 218.415, which governs investments, how you all invest your money. You have a pretty comprehensive policy that outlines what you can and can't invest in, and your finance director has to get continuing education in investments. Next slide, please. So now I'm going to go back to the most important, I think, part of this document is what's called Management's Discussion and Analysis. It starts on page three. It's kind of a summary of this whole document. It just gives you a brief outline of what has gone on during the year. And you can see on the slide that the assets did exceed the liabilities by about $123 million, and that was actually a $2.4 million decrease from the prior year. But the reason that it was such a big decrease from the prior year is that in the prior year, you had an unusually large increase, because you had contributed land and improvements for the Oviedo and the park. You didn't have that in this year. So, also, your debt increased about $4.2 million this year because of the public improvement revenue note. And also, you refunded your utility revenue notes and managed about a million-dollar savings for the city. Interest rates are still pretty low, so that I'm pretty sure finance just about has everything refinanced, so there's probably not much left to redo.
I don't know. Do we have anything that we should be refunding? All the bond people in the back there, so.
Next slide, please. That's it? Oh, okay. All right, you're right. All right, then, the next thing is that the general fund balance of your general fund is about $4 million, and that's the main operating fund of the city. That's the fund that pays for police and fire and parks and rec. And your fund balance is now about 21% of your budgeted expenditures. So that's a reasonable cushion, you know, anywhere from 20% to 25%. You have a policy that actually requires 15%, so you're definitely within your policy. And your general fund had revenues that were in excess of budget and expenses that were less than budget, which is good. The water sewer fund had a decrease again in '14, as it did in 2013. And I'm not sure, I don't think, well, I think if you have questions about that, that would be a good question for Jerry. I think he's prepared to answer why you've had the decrease the two years in a row. And that's the last slide? Oh, no, there you go. Okay. The last thing that we're required to do in an audit is what we call financial condition monitoring, where the auditor general has 14 or 15 ratios that we look at and we compare Oviedo to other cities that are comparable in size. And the city of Oviedo looks good. You're definitely within range. Your trend is good. We did not see anything that would indicate any kind of deteriorating financial condition, so.
That's comforting.
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions?
Are you ready? Councilman Britton? Councilman Hinkin?
Just like last year, almost.
Yeah, we did have a management finding this year. Other than that, yeah, that's good. It's a well-managed city.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Mr. Boop, did you want to address those two items that were brought up? The first one would be on the fund balance. The fund balance is just in the general fund. I mean, we have reserves spread out throughout all of our enterprise funds, our replacement funds, that aren't accounted for in those dollars, are they?
Correct. Yes, you do have several other special revenue funds in the city that are not accounted for specifically in the general fund.
That all have their own reserves for their own needs.
They all have their own reserves, several special revenues, debt service funds, funds of that type, yes.
And water sewer decreasing?
Water sewer, a decrease.
That's in revenue, I'm assuming?
It's in a couple of different places. Last year, when I stood up before you and made representation to you that this year I really expected to have a profit, an increase in fund position at the end of the fiscal year this year, due to the reengineering that we did of the depreciation expense associated with your assets that are depreciated within the water sewer utility. Last year, when we went through and we relived the assets, it brought another $1 million to the bottom line, which means that we actually reduced expenses by about $1 million in the water sewer utility this year associated with depreciation expense. So knowing that that was coming, I was really expecting some sort of an increase in fund balance, an increase in net assets this year. That didn't happen. The reason that didn't happen, really, is because of three different things. The water revenue itself decreased by about $170,000 in the utility this year over previous fiscal years. Don't know what that's really attributable to yet. Consumption was definitely down over the previous fiscal year, but also, too, we had a wetter-than-usual summer, so that could have contributed to it as well. Also, in the utility, there was your cost of sales expenses increased by about $550,000, and that's associated with meters, plant equipment, and water lines. Those three items had significant increases this year over the previous fiscal year. In addition to that, there were, in the administrative component of the income statement, there were increases in salaries and benefits, professional services, other current charges, and the general fund transfer increased a little bit over the previous fiscal year. That totaled about $150,000. So those three items, the decrease in revenues, the increase in cost of sales, and the increase in administration expense, basically was a reduction in net income of $871,000 from the previous fiscal year, which pretty much wiped out the effect that we expected of the depreciation expense. So really, net-net, year-over-year, we ended up in the same place, like Ms. Leary said, because we didn't get the performance out of the fund that we expected.
Okay. Any questions from council?
Just one last thing, if I can.
Sure, of course. Florence, yours.
Kelly Jones is in the room here, and she's sitting in the back. She probably doesn't want to be recognized, but I have to recognize her, because she really did an outstanding job in working on the report this year, coordinating all the things associated with the audit, managing the audit itself, and really bringing the report to you in this fine format that it is, so.
Well, we greatly appreciate that. Thank you. Mr. Cobb, anything else on this item?
No, sir.
All righty, moving along, our first order of business is the approval of the minutes for the February 16 regular session. Would you like to entertain a motion to do so?
Motion second.
Motion second. Councilman Schenk, anything?
No, sir.
Councilman Hinkin?
Nope.
All righty, seeing no questions asked, all in favor of the motion to adopt the minutes as presented, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Still leaning back as if the deputy mayor is there.
Yeah, I was looking for it. Get used to doing that. All righty, item number four, public comment. I have no written requests. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address council at this time? Seeing none, we will close public comment, move on to the consent agenda, items five through seven. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hinkin?
I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions, Councilman Hinkin?
No, sir.
Councilman Britton?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to bring up item number six, is a resolution for a fair share agreement for Divine's. And I don't know if Mikey's in here or not, but why don't you come up, Mike? Do you mind?
No, not at all.
Divine is a new restaurant. It's kind of a success story for us. A couple young UCF grads are in the restaurant business, came in and worked with us, and now you're doing pretty good. Why don't you just tell us a little bit about the restaurant?
Yes.
Where you are, give the whole, where you are and the whole rundown.
Yeah, wonderful. Thank you for having me this evening. We're actually right behind the city itself. We're located in the Alafer Woods Shopping Center, in between the Shogun Restaurant and the IHOP that have been staples in the community forever. I just want to say thank you to the mayor and the council members, as well as all the public workspeople for your support and help with opening our new restaurant. And what we're trying to do is the fair share agreement for the impact fees and hope to spread it out over the course of the year. Do you have any questions for me?
Keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your support.
Now, how many people in the audience have been to their fine restaurant? Well, I've been there, but...
Well, thank you, Chief.
If you haven't, you're really in for a treat if you're on this side of the town and you're looking for something that feels like you're on Park Avenue in Winter Park, like the Wine Room. Their place is the place to go, guys, so, great job.
Thank you for your support. Good luck.
My pleasure. Good job, Mike.
Anything else, Councilman Britton?
Nope, that'll do it.
Councilman Schenk, any questions on the consent agenda?
Nope.
You're good. All righty, motion on table is to adopt it as presented. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to our public hearings, our first one is ordinance number 1616. This is a comprehensive plan amendment. Mr. Cobb, I'll turn it over to you.
Actually, Mayor, it'd be best to turn it over to Mr. Groot.
I'm sorry?
It'd be best to turn it over to Mr. Groot.
Oh, yeah, he's got to read that silly thing. Mr. Groot, can you read the ordinance by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot.
An ordinance of the city of Oviedo, Florida, amending ordinance number 896, said ordinance being the comprehensive land planning ordinance as previously amended, providing for amendment to the city of Oviedo comprehensive plan, changing the future land use of approximately 8.786 acres described in this ordinance from commercial CM to medium-density residential MDR, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for codification and directions to the code codifier, and providing for an effective date. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. Now, Mr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mayor. The subject amendment qualifies as a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment. And what that means is that if city council adopts the amendment tonight, then it will be sent to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. If the department chooses not to review or no one files an appeal, the amendment will become effective in 31 days. The maximum density of the proposed medium-density residential future land use designation is eight dwelling units per acre. This will yield a maximum density of 70 dwelling units. The proposed MDR future land use designation is compatible with the surrounding future land use designations, the surrounding zoning districts, as well as the surrounding uses. The staff did do an analysis of the proposed amendment and found that there is adequate capacity within the city's infrastructure to accommodate the proposed amendment. The Development Review Committee and the Planning, Zoning, and Appeals Board both reviewed this amendment and recommended adoption. It's recommended tonight that you conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number 1616.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Is the applicant present?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. For the record, Ellen Avery Smith, Rogers Towers, 201 South Orange Avenue in Orlando. Just by...
Actually, Mayor, it'd be best to turn it over to Mr. Groot.
I'm sorry?
It'd be best to turn it over to Mr. Groot.
Oh, yeah, he's got to read that silly thing. Mr. Groot, can you read the ordinance by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot.
An ordinance of the city of Oviedo, Florida amending ordinance number 896, said ordinance being the comprehensive land planning ordinance as previously amended, providing for amendment to the city of Oviedo comprehensive plan, changing the future land use of approximately 8.786 acres described in this ordinance from commercial CM to medium-density residential MDR, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for codification and directions to the code codifier, and providing for an effective date. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. Now, Mr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mayor. The subject amendment qualifies as a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment. What that means is that if city council adopts the amendment tonight, then it will be sent to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. If the department chooses not to review or no one files an appeal, the amendment will become effective in 31 days. The maximum density of the proposed medium-density residential future land use designation is eight dwelling units per acre. This will yield a maximum density of 70 dwelling units. The proposed MDR future land use designation is compatible with the surrounding future land use designations, the surrounding zoning districts, as well as the surrounding uses. The staff did do an analysis of the proposed amendment and found that there is adequate capacity within the city's infrastructure to accommodate the proposed amendment. The Development Review Committee and the Planning, Zoning, and Appeals Board both reviewed this amendment and recommended adoption. It's recommended tonight that you conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number 1616.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Is the applicant present?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. For the record, Ellen Avery Smith, Rogers Towers, 201 South Orange Avenue in Orlando. Just by way of introduction, a whole menagerie of people behind me, Jeremy Camp and Dallas Austin from Beazer Homes, which is the contract purchaser of this land. And also in our, in our, on our Beazer team is Dick German, who I think many of you know. The seller's representative is Dave Axel, who is also here, and then Charlie Madden, who is not joined by Chad Moorhead, but ably assisted by Chad through this process from Madden Engineering, and they're the project engineers. As Mr. Cobb mentioned, this property is approximately 8.8 acres. It is located on Dr. Edward Stoner Way, interestingly, about 450 feet west of Alafoya Trail or State Road 434. So it is not visible to passersby on Alafoya Trail. I think that if you, if you know this area, if you're heading north on Alafoya and you choose, and you want to turn left onto Dr. Edward Stoner Way, there is no median cut for access, and so you have to go and make a U-turn or make a different maneuver. So I mention this to you because it is not the best place to site a commercial endeavor or enterprise, which is why we're asking for this land use amendment. We are at, the current future land use designation is commercial. The current zoning is commercial or C2, and the property, for the reasons I've stated earlier, has sat vacant forever, obviously, because it hasn't been developed. And so we are proposing to increase the city's tax base by bringing a maximum of 70 town home units, which will be fee ownership, so they will be conveyed, you know, but with, with a lot and a home on them. They will just be, some of the homes will be attached instead of all detached. Again, the site is not suitable for commercial development for many reasons, the ones I've stated, and also reasons stated in your staff report. As Mr. Cobb mentioned, this is a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment, which means the jurisdiction is with the local government to decide whether this is a, a, a policy that you would like, or a map amendment that you would like to approve or not. If you choose to approve it, that it is transmitted to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, and they can either choose to review or not review, as the case may be. Again, we're, we're proposing to change the future land use designation from commercial to medium-density residential. As for the reasons stated in your staff report, the city is a great place to live, and a lot of people want to live here, and so we're hopeful that this will bring much-needed residential units to your community so that other people can enjoy living here. As I mentioned earlier, there is no median cut in State Road 434 to get into Dr. Edward Stoner Way. That is reflected in our traffic report that is a part of your record. We have also gotten a water and sewer availability letter from your staff, which shows that water and sewer capacity is available for this property. We have gotten a school capacity letter showing that there is school capacity for the maximum 70 residential units. And if you will look at your staff reports, it's interesting to note that, and by the way, your staff did an excellent job on working with us through this process, because without them, you know, kind of rolling up their sleeves and working on, with this, on this comp plan amendment, and also there's a companion rezoning and development agreement application, they've really done a magnificent job of working with us through this process, and we appreciate that. Excuse me, we appreciate that. And in their staff report, you'll see these maps. One is called existing future land use, and you'll see the commercial land use designation. You'll see the properties to the west and the south are already, and the west, southwest, and south are all developed with town home or single-family residential units already. Even a portion of the property immediately to the south across Dr. Edward Stoner Way, you can tell on the map that's in your package that even though it's a commercial land use, it has been developed with residential units. And then you'll see also in there the proposed future land use map showing the medium-density residential, and that it is consistent and compatible with the surrounding uses and with the surrounding land uses of the properties that are adjacent and near this property. So with that, I will be quiet and see if you have any questions for our team.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Nope.
Thank you so much. This is a public hearing. I do not have any written requests. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address council on ordinance number 1616? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing portion and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Henkin?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1616.
Second?
Motion and a second. Councilman Henkin, you have the floor?
No, sir. Looks fine.
Councilman Schenck?
Thank you, guys.
Councilman Britton?
I'm, I'm good, thanks.
All righty. I do have one question, if I may have the opportunity. I see that there was a rendering attached to the next item, 1617. It's known as attachment three. Does that rendering apply to this as well?
It applies to this project as well, yes.
All righty, so that is a minimum standard of architectural features that'll be on the town home product?
Well, let me, I guess I have a question more than I have an answer to that. It was our understanding, reading the city code, that an elevation was not a requirement of either a comprehensive plan amendment or a rezoning, but the council asked for the elevation at the last meeting, so we supplied that, knowing it was conceptual because, and it did take a little bit longer than expected to provide it, because we had to actually develop it. The team did.
Sure.
And so it is very conceptual in nature, and we would very much like to not have to say today that we are absolutely bound by it, because it is a work in progress, and we're very early, we're talking about a comprehensive plan amendment application and a rezoning, and we've got a long way to go to preliminary subdivision plan, final engineering, and all of that. And so we would respectfully ask that that be considered a work in progress as it's marked on the document, as concept.
Well, I, I, let me clarify my question. What I'm saying is that that is going to be the minimum that you're going to build. You know, once, once, once we vote to change this, there's no going back for us. So without having any architectural standards on townhomes in our code, which we do not, you could just build big square boxes. So if you're unwilling to commit to that is the minimum baseline, then I would like to have further discussion. I mean, the rest of the council may feel differently. I think that's a reasonable request. I'm asking that that be the minimum, because quite frankly, when we get to site development plan, you can do better, but I'm just asking for a minimum right now.
And when, I just, to clarify, because I think.
Sure?
I'm Jeremy Camp with Beazer Homes. This product or the elevations you saw in the packet, they were developed for this project. That was the intent. We had another product intended that we wanted to bring over, but we wanted to do some things to the elevation, and that's what you saw. So it is fully our intent to do this as the minimum. I think what Ellen's trying to explain is that as we go through the design process, because this is an Ardis rendering, sometimes you have windows that need to move a little bit or whatever, but the materials, the style, everything you see here is the intent for this project.
The shutters, the brick paver driveways, all of that stuff. We're not going to see regular driveways.
Brick pavers, the shutters.
That, that's all we're, all I'm looking for is that this is the baseline, and it'll only get better as time goes on. Because, you know, I went on your website and I looked, you have better product out there. So, you know, we, we can expect better as we go through. I'm just trying to establish a baseline, because we don't have any architectural codes that control townhomes. That's the problem.
Right, and this is what we intend to use.
Okay, so you're committing that that's your baseline?
Yeah, it, with the, with the, you know, knowledge that everybody's going to have tweaks or whatever.
Tweak, tweak, tweaks are tweaks. I'm just saying baseline, like Councilman Henkin pointed out.
Exactly.
So the colors, the shutters, the brick pavers, you know, we won't, it'll, it's going to look, you might have a window six inches over or some, you know, something in the field may come up, but it is going to, you're not going to scale back on, you know, the landscaping or the shutters or the brick pavers or anything like, or the architectural shingles or anything. It's going to look pretty much like that.
That's correct.
And those colors too? Kind of, are the colors you're thinking?
We actually would probably have more colors than this, because we don't want every building looking exactly the same.
Right.
So, you know.
Those are tweaks.
We didn't propose a color palette for every building.
I think you do, right?
Sure. So you're, you're submitting that as part of 1616, that that is your minimum?
Well, Mr. Mayor, can, can I jump in there? If you're, if you're going to incorporate, this is what I'm thinking you're talking about, right? It would be appropriate in the next ordinance to provide that this document is part of the agreement.
Okay.
And the language, and it has some additional language to add to the agreement too, once you get to that point.
Okay.
This is part of the next, anyway.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions from council?
No, sir.
Anything else from the applicant?
No, thank you.
Mr. Cobb, Mr. Groot, anything else from staff before I call the question?
Uh, no, Mayor.
All righty. Motion on the table is to adopt ordinance number 1616. All in favor of the ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, we're on to item number, ordinance number 1617. Mr. Groot, can you please read that ordinance by title only?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Oviedo, Florida amending the official zoning map to change the zoning district of approximately eight and seven, 8.786 acres located on the north side of Dr. Edward Stoner Way and approximately 455 feet west of Alafoya Trail from commercial C2 to planned unit development, PUD, providing for legislative findings and intent, implementing actions, non-codification, severability, conflicts, and ineffective date.
Let me jump in there. That's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a companion ordinance to ordinance number 1616. The proposed PUD zoning district is compatible with the medium-density residential, it's consistent with the medium-density residential future land use designation that you just adopted. It is also compatible with the surrounding zoning districts in the area. One of the unique things about the planned unit development zoning classification is that the ordinance has a requirement that you must adopt a conceptual development plan and a development agreement along with the zoning ordinance. The, this ordinance does include a development agreement and conceptual development plan for the development of a town home neighborhood consisting of 70 townhomes. It also has private rights of way, two access points on Dr. Edward Stoner Drive, one access point being the main entrance to the neighborhood, and the other one being for emergency access. There are buffers provided on the perimeter of the per- property. A1 buffers are provided, provided on the east, the west, and south sides of the property. There is a wetland buffer that is provided on, along the north part of the property. The Development Review Committee reviewed the development agreement and the conceptual development plan, had some recommended addition revisions to the development agreement and conceptual development plan. The applicant concurred with those revisions, so they have already been incorporated into the agreement. The Planning, Zoning, and Appeals Board also considered this ordinance, as well as the development agreement and conceptual development plan, with the DRC revisions, and recommends approval. It's recommended tonight that the city council conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number 1617. Now, as we mentioned earlier, attachment three, during the first reading of this ordinance at your last meeting, there was a request that renderings be provided. They have been provided and were provided as attachment three of your memorandum based on the questions. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Groot and let him advise you on how to address the, their renderings.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Council. I think, based upon what you've all just discussed in the last item, if you added the following as section Roman numeral three, five, print L, it is recognized that the exhibit identified as, and we'll call it whatever it is next in order, shall conceptually represent a minimum standard of development. So that will be under building restrictions, and this would represent a minimum standard of development, and it would be an exhibit to the agreement. That's what I understood was the goal.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Groot. I'm going to see if the applicant has any presentation or comments. The lawyers have to write every word down.
Of course.
They're paid by the letter, I think, aren't you?
We might as well be.
Yes.
This is a long document, so I want to make sure we get the intent of it. So, Mr. Groot, I'm going to read it back to you to make sure I've written it down correctly. It is recognized that exhibit blank, whatever that will be, shall conceptually represent a minimum standard of development.
Right. It is recognized that the exhibit identified as exhibit whatever it is shall conceptually represent a minimum standard of development. That'd be Roman numeral three, five, L.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to, I wanted to clarify that for the record. All right, and again, for the record, again, this is a companion to the comprehensive plan amendment we just spoke about a few minutes ago. It is to rezone the property to PUD with a companion development agreement and conceptual development plan. All of those details are set forth in those documents, so we will not belabor the point. I think it's important to know that you will notice in some of the documents that there are some wetlands on this, on the, on the bigger parcel. Those wetlands have been left out of the development plan. There are no impacts proposed to those wetlands. They will be transferred in title to Beazer, but they will not be part of the development plan. So there are no impacts to wetlands, there are no threatened and endangered species on the site, nothing like that. And so I just wanted to clarify that. We obviously, according to your staff report, you know that we've gotten recommendations of approval from all of your bodies below and the staff, and so we ask that you please approve this with the one change to the development agreement reflecting the elevation.
All right, and everybody's in agreement with that?
Yep.
Yes, they are.
Okay. Any questions from council? You, you mentioned something earlier, and I, I just want to clarify it for the record. None of this property touches Alafoya Wood, Alafoya Trail, 434, correct?
That's correct.
Right, so it's back in the woods.
It's literally at least 450 feet west, and that would be the easternmost property line.
So it has no frontage on 434 at all?
No frontage, no visibility, no curb, no median cut in 434 to get to it.
Down Dr. Edward Stoner and back in the corner there.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions from council? No? Thank you so much. This is a public hearing. I will open that portion of the meeting up right now. I do not have any written requests. Is there anybody in the council chambers who'd like to address council on ordinance Seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Henkin?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1617, and also add the language as Mr. Groot talked about, that incorporates attachment number three, the conceptual rendering, as a minimum standard for this development.
Second?
Motion and a second. Mr. Groot, is that what you were looking for?
Absolutely, that's perfect.
Ms. Avery Smith, that's fine for you? Okay.
Can I add that, that, and as agree, as, I'm just going to add, as agreed to by Ellen Avery Smith, as Miss Smith, that way, whatever the wording is, is exactly, we're, we're relying on the wording that's been thrown out there, so.
All right.
Just for the record, that's, it's the exact wording that you two agreed to, essentially.
All right.
Motioner, agree?
Yes, sir.
Motioner, seconder, agree. Councilman Henkin, you have any questions for discussion?
No, sir.
Councilman Schenck?
Nope.
Councilman Britton?
Good.
All righty. Seeing no questions, the motion on the table is to adopt ordinance number 1617. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. There you go. Go build a nice development. And remember, that was minimum standards. You still got to come back here. All righty, moving on. Item number 10, ordinance number 1618.
Can you read this one?
No, I don't think so.
I told you, never mind.
No. Mr. Groot, can you read ordinance number 1618 by title only, please?
This is to Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida establishing an economic development ad valorem tax exemption from certain ad valorem taxation for Oviedo Medical Center, LLC, an affiliate of Hospital Corporation of America, Inc., providing for findings, intent, and purposes, providing for the grant of a graduated and declining economic development ad valorem tax exemption for a period of five tax years, providing for continuing performance obligations in the performance agreement, providing for review, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for conflicts, providing for a savings provision, providing for severability, providing for non-codification and correction of scribblers' errors, and providing for an effective date and expiration. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for city council to adopt an economic development ad valorem tax exemption for, for certain ad valorem taxation from, for the Oviedo Medical Center. The ordinance provides for a graduated tax exemption for, over a five-year period, with the first year being a fifty percent, uh, exemption, second year being forty percent, third year being thirty percent, I mean, the, third year being thirty percent, fourth year being twenty percent, and the fifth year being ten percent. The tack, the, uh, five-year period will commence with the ad valorem tax year twenty sixteen. Uh, the estimated taxable value of the eighty thousand square foot to ninety thousand square foot bed tower is approximately sixty-seven million eighty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. The associated new employment for the facility within the first two years is a hundred and seventy-four new full-time positions with an average annual salary of at least fifty-eight thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars. Uh, part of our requirements for a ad valorem tax exemption is that the Seminole County Property Appraiser must do a review of the application. Uh, the property appraisers' review is provided in your packet. Uh, the development of the, uh, bed tower would generate over one million five hundred and fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollar, additional tax dollars over the five-year period. The proposed tax exemption will cost the city approximately four hundred and eighty-one thousand forty-seven, forty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. It is recommended tonight that the city council conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number sixteen eighteen. Mr. Jones could not be with us tonight, uh, but however, Mr. Doherty is here in his place. Uh, we also have with us tonight Ms. Irma Stenman from the Metro Orlando Economic Development Commission and Mr. Richard Reed from, uh, he is the Chief Financial Officer for HCA Florida. They are also with us tonight. Uh, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Anything else?
That's it, Mayor.
Alrighty. Christie, a presentation for us?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Good evening and members of the council.
Sometimes brief is better.
Yes, unfortunately, John couldn't make it this evening, so I get a bask in his glory. Once again, uh, he gets to do all the hard work, I get to do the easy, the easy work. Uh, I just wanted to hit, uh, on some of the economic impact highlights. Uh, as Mr. Cobb had mentioned, the Seminole County Property Appraiser's office determined, uh, the development of the HCA, uh, hospital bed tower would, will generate over one million five hundred and fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars in additional ad valorem taxes over the five-year period inclusive of the tax exemption. Uh, the Metro Economic Development, or the Metro Orlando Economic Development Commission estimated the overall impact, or economic impact of the proposed facility over ten-year period as one hundred and forty-six million six hundred and twenty-two thousand ninety-nine dollars in direct benefits to the city, county, and other taxing districts. Uh, now that's direct, and a seventy-eight million four hundred and thirteen thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars in indirect and induced benefits. The facility is estimated to create over two hundred and twenty new direct jobs and a hundred and ninety-nine indirect jobs over a five-year period. Uh, and with that, that's the end of my presentation.
Any questions, council? Any presentation from the hospital, or we did that last week, or you wanna come up, Mr.?
Sure. Hello, everyone, city council. Uh, Richard Reed, Chief Financial Officer with Central Florida Regional Hospital. I'm here to rep, to represent, um, our endeavor in Oviedo. Um, a lot of the items have already been hit upon. We're very excited about the opportunity to have a hospital, to open a hospital in the city of Oviedo to serve, um, another area of Seminole County. I almost hesitate to give these out, uh, based on earlier discussions, uh, but that's okay. I'll go ahead and do it anyways. These are, uh, at present, uh, we've been doing a lot of work, uh, behind the scenes to, um, meet our deadlines, um, within the company, um, and also some state regulations. Uh, so we do have some, um, pretty solid plans around what the facility will look like. The architects did tell me, they said the only thing that may change on this, other than maybe some landscaping, is the size of the windows. But other than that, you can count on this being, uh, pretty well done.
We have architectural standards for our commercial buildings.
What did you want, shutters? Thank you.
You know, shutters would be nice on the building.
I'll make that recommendation.
Not bad, guys.
I think the, uh, I think that it's a great-looking facility. It, it lends itself to a design that, um, our company, um, has used in another hospital in Texas, obviously changed, um, some of the architectural features to match our existing E R. Uh, I think it'll blend nicely. Um, and I think our, um, our expectations, um, around the deliverables on this project, I think, uh, we will not have a problem meeting those deliverables.
Are these pub, well, they're now public documents that you handed in, so, okay. I think this is terrific. With council, any questions, comments? Councilman Britton, looking good?
Looking great.
There you go, Councilman Schenk?
Wonderful.
Councilman Hackett? Great job. Thank you so much.
I'm gonna see your bulldozers out there. We are too.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Reed. How much longer through the AKA process? I know it's laborious, but...
Uh, the AKA process, um, you know, we've had, um, our first stand-up meeting that got, um, another review that was scheduled earlier, um, earlier in February, uh, due to some weather, um, that happened in Nashville. A lot of our design team and, um, officials that would have represented us were not able to fly out of because of the ice. Um, that's been rescheduled for later this month, um, I think towards the end of, uh, March, if not the first part of April. It should not hold us up on, um, our plans, um, to meet our deadlines. Uh, so that's just a little bit of work on our end. Uh, more significant work, I think, on, um, the, um, zoning, the, um, wetland mitigation, a lot of that work. I think they're still in progress on that, uh, but we anticipate being on schedule.
And if anybody asked us what that schedule was, what, what should we say to folks that, you know, when, like, uh, Councilman Hackett said, or Councilman Britton said, when the bulldozers will be there?
If the stars align and everything goes as we hope...
A lot of moving parts here, we know that.
A lot of moving parts. Um, I would not be surprised for groundbreaking to be, um, around, um, end of August, September timeframe. Uh, so that's what we're hoping for. This is obviously, um, this amendment, uh, this ordinance and the tax abatements go a long way towards making sure that we're funded within our company. A lot of competing applications, but, um, I'm confident that that'll happen. I've been advised that, um, timeframe from shovel in the, in the dirt to opening is eighteen months. Um, if, again, everything works out as planned, as we saw with, um, the E R, we were delayed a couple of months because of, you know, a, a steel truss got broken and had to be refabricated for a bridge. So, uh, again, if everything works out as planned, we're budgeting for about an eighteen-month turnaround time.
Awesome. So if we say by end of year, we're covered?
I would think so.
Thank you so much. Any other questions? I'm sorry, guys?
Nope. Appreciate it.
Alrighty, this is a public hearing. I have no written requests. Is there anybody in the, in the audience who'd like to address council on ordinance number sixteen eighteen? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hackett?
I'd like to very happily make a motion to, uh, adopt ordinance number sixteen eighteen.
Motion second. Councilman Hackett, anything else?
Everything.
Councilman Schenk?
Thank you, Little John. Thank you, too.
Alright. Councilman Britton? I think you have, uh, C P H Engineering is doing all site work, so there's, there's a, a whole team out there, and the only thing I'd like to request is shutters. No. Alrighty, thank you, gentlemen. Anything else, council? Mr. Cobb, anything else?
No, sir.
Alrighty. Motion on the table is to adopt. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Moving on, we're up to resolution number twenty-nine sixty. This is a special exempt use order for some kind of satellite. I don't know, I guess we'll learn what this thing is in just a little bit. Uh, Mr.... Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for council to approve a special exception use order to allow the installation of, and this is the, the technical term of a very small aperture satellite, a V S A T antenna with a maximum forty-eight inch diameter and a maximum height not to exceed twelve inches above the existing fence, fence line. Uh, the V S A T antenna is for commercial operation of the Dollar General store, uh, that is located at eight hundred West Broadway Street. Uh, the special exception use order, uh, will allow for the antenna to be mounted on a six-foot-high metal pole. The proposed pole will be located approximately twenty-four point eight feet north of the south property line and seventy-eight point five feet east of the west property line. Uh, the outside diameter of the proposed pole is, is approximately four point five inches. The antenna's gonna be located within an existing fenced area, uh, located on the back of the store. Uh, the height of the top of the antenna after installation shall not exceed twelve inches above the existing fence line. Uh, the Development Review Committee, uh, reviewed this proposal and recommended approval. The Planning, Zoning, and Appeals Board also reviewed this, uh, proposed special exception use order and recommended approval with the addition of two conditions to the special exception use order. And then these are mainly, I think, housekeeping and that the, uh, establishing, one establishing a maximum diameter for the proposed antenna to be forty-eight inches, and also to establish a maximum height of the antenna to be no more than twelve inches above the existing fence line. Uh, the staff concurs with the P C A recommendations and has incorporated the language into the special exception use order. Uh, it's recommended that the city council conduct a public hearing and adopt resolution number two-nine six-zero dash fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Is the applicant here? Just name and address for the record, please.
Uh, William Petrie, one four five five Lot, Loma Circle, Winter Springs, Florida. Um, I'm the district manager for the Dollar General of Oviedo. My store manager is here as well with me. Um, the satellite will be located in the back of the store, behind a fence line. It will not peer above that. The satellite's mainly used for documents being fed to the store whenever the broadband goes down and other miscellaneous tools.
Okay. And you agree with the conditions, whatever it was, twelve inches?
Yeah, all those have been written and confirmed on my side.
Okay, great. Let me just see if there's any questions from council. Councilman Britton? Hackett?
No.
Nope? Okay. Thank you. Uh, as mentioned, this is a public hearing. I'd like to open that up right now. I have no written request to speak on resolution twenty-nine sixty dash fifteen. Anybody in the audience? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-nine sixty fifteen?
Second.
Motion second? Anything, Councilman Schenk?
No, sir.
Councilman Hackett?
I just had a quick question.
Sure.
Just to educate myself. Why, uh, Brian, maybe you or, uh, Lonnie can help me out with this. Why, why is, are we having this, uh, special exception for this small antenna? And I, I go back to the days when we used to have the big, large, uh, antennas in the backyards, and there were all kinds of rules against it. And then somewhere along the line, there was an F C C regulation that came out that allowed the, the small disc antennas, and everything was allowed after that. So I'm curious as to why this requires the, uh, special exception.
The reason it requires a special exception is that the diameter of the antenna exceeds eighteen inches. Uh, we are, our allowable is eighteen inches diameter. Anything over eighteen inches diameter requires a special exception.
Okay. That's easy enough.
Anything else?
Nope.
Alrighty. Any other questions from council? No? Mr. Cobb, anything else to add?
Uh, no.
Alright, motion on table is to adopt resolution number twenty-nine sixty dash fifteen. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Guys, go get yourself a satellite dish. How's business been over there?
Man pass.
Moving on to item number eleven A, which is actually resolution number fourteen. So if everybody can just skip down to fourteen, we're gonna move that up to eleven A at the, um, city attorney's request. And Mr. Groot, since we've moved it up, do you need now to read it by title only or anything? It's a resolution, not an ordinance.
No, there's no reason to read it, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just as to why we're moving it, because it's being treated as a public hearing, and this is, process is a public hearing. That's the only reason.
Alrighty, so I should just go to Mr. Cobb then for an introduction?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the city council to authorize an installment purchase agreement in the principal amount of seven hundred and thirty thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars for the purpose of financing certain public safety vehicles. Uh, the financing will be for the, uh, recently purchased, uh, fire engine as well as the recently purchased fire rescue vehicles. Uh, in November of two thousand and thirteen, the city adopt, city council adopted resolution twenty-seven fifty-eight thirteen, uh, authorizing the purchase of a new fire pumper in the amount not to exceed four hundred and forty-three thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars. In January of two thousand and fourteen, council adopted resolution twenty-seven eighty-four dash fourteen, authorizing the purchase of our new life support, transport, and rescue vehicle, uh, for an amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. At your last meeting, you ordered an R F P for the installment purchase agreement to Regions Equipment Finance Corporation for, to finance the rescue vehicle for five years at a fixed rate of one point three six percent, and to finance the fire engine for seven years at a fixed rate of one point six six, and it, for an amount not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, the delivery date of the note will be March the fourth, two thousand and fifteen. The note will mature on March the fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Principal and interest payments on the note will be paid monthly, beginning April fourth, two thousand and fifteen, and will continue until the note is paid in full. Tonight, we have with us, uh, Mr. Mark Galvin, Senior Vice President of First Southwest, our financial advisor, as well as Ms. Mindy, Misty Taylor, uh, who is with Bryant, Miller and Olive, the city's bond council. So it's recommended that the city council adopt resolution number twenty-nine sixty-four dash fifteen.
Thank, uh, thank you, Mr. Cobb. Um, this is a public hearing, as Mr. Groot announced. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address council on resolution number twenty-nine sixty-four dash fifteen? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hackett?
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-nine sixty-four dash fifteen.
Okay, second.
Councilman Britton, beat your, we have motion and a second. Councilman Hackett?
Nope, looks great.
Councilman Britton? Any questions?
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Schenk?
No.
Alrighty. Uh, seeing no questions, uh, the motion on the table is to adopt resolution twenty-nine sixty-four dash fifteen. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Now we're back on to the regular agenda, so we're, uh, over to item number twelve, which is vacation of a utility easement. Uh, Mr. Groot, can you read this by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, closing, vacating, and abandoning a twenty-foot utility easement located east of Oviedo Boulevard, along the east property line of Lot Twelve, Evans Groves, as depicted more specifically in the attached Exhibit A, providing for findings, a savings provision, conflicts, severability, non-codification, and ineffective date. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a request for the council to approve a request to close a, or an abandon, a twenty-foot utility easement that is no longer in use by the city. Uh, the utility easement is located along the eastern boundary of the applicant's property, which is also, which is known as Lot Twelve of the Oviedo, of Oviedo on the park. Uh, the purpose of the easement is to, uh, assist with the development of Lot Twelve, the purpose of the vacate, I'm sorry. Uh, the city engineer has determined that vacating the easement will not operate to detriment, to the detriment of the city. Uh, we also had it, had the request reviewed by the franchise utility operators in the area, and there is no objection to the vacation of the easement. It's recommended that the City Council read the ordinance by title and schedule a public hearing for Monday, April 6, 2015.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule the public hearing for April 6, 2015 for ordinance number 1619 here at Oviedo City Hall approximately 6:30 PM, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Any questions?
Sir.
Nope. Councilman Schenck?
No, sir.
All righty. Hearing none, I'll call the vote to schedule the second public hearing for April 6. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number 13, it's resolution number 2958-15, and this is the work order for Littlejohn Engineering. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. At your last meeting, we asked that you can, you had a discussion about this work order, and it is for FY 1415 with Littlejohn for Economic Development Services. At the last meeting, you asked us to continue your consideration of the work order to this meeting, and also asked us if we would put it on the agenda for the February 23rd work session. At the work session, the council asked Mr. Jones if he would add a few things to the, to the scope of services involved with the work order. When it came time to really prioritize things, Mr. Jones prioritized the hospital items ahead of his own work order. And so he is still putting together the revised scope of services. And so he requests that we continue the work order for one more meeting to the April 6 meeting so that he can get everything completed for you.
Where's the pleasure of council? I see a motion to continue.
Make a motion to, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to continue to the April 6 meeting, resolution 2958-15.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion?
No, sir.
Councilman Britton, you good?
I'm good.
All righty. Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion to continue till April 6, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Let's see. Yep, moving along, item number 15, it's resolution number 2969-15. Mr. Cobb, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the council to approve an economic development ad balarum tax exemption performance agreement for Oviedo Medical Center LLC. This is a companion to ordinance number 1618. One of the requirements within ordinance number 1618 was that the applicant had, the tax exemption would not become effective until the applicant entered into a performance agreement with the city. The performance agreement spells out all of the requirements for the tax exemption. It establishes the specific terms and conditions, the job creation and capital investment criteria, the submittal of annual reports, the verifying of, verifying satisfaction of the performance agreement terms, and it also requests the annual exemption honor before March 1st of each year. The performance agreement contains the specific and binding performance criteria and activities that must be accommodated by HCA in order to receive the approved economic development tax exemption. As stated before, Mr. Daughtry is here in replacement of Mr. Jones, as well as Ms. Duman and Mr. Reed. And should you have any questions, it's recommended that City Council adopt resolution number 2969-15.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Do we have a presentation, or is this just a companion? Okay.
Memorializing it.
Hmm? Memorializing. We are. This is a public hearing. I generally, we request, written requests. I don't have any, but I will open it up. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address council on resolution 2969-15? Hearing none, we will close the public comment and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt resolution number 2969-15.
Second.
Motion second. Councilman Schenck, anything?
Four.
Thanks, guys.
Councilman Hackett?
I just want to thank Littlejohn and our hospital friends there. It's a very grateful city out there. It's been waiting a very long time. So to just to hear those, you know, ballpark figures and know this is really coming after so many years, just, you know, we wish you guys all the best, and we'll be here to help you every step of the way with every nail, whatever you need us. So I'm really looking forward to cutting the ribbon on this building. This will be a highlight for the city, and just thank you very much for sticking with us and seeing this through.
I've heard you're pretty good with cabling and wiring. Are you going to go out and help them?
Yeah.
We cut them a deal short.
Councilman Britton, anything?
I'm good.
All righty. Hearing no other comments, staff, anybody?
No, Mayor.
No. Hearing nothing else, I will call the question. The motion on the table is to adopt resolution 2969-15. All in favor of that, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. There we go, gentlemen. I do have one request outside of everything we discussed this evening from the hospital. Is it possible to get these in a digital format sometime tomorrow? PDF?
Should be, yes.
If, if it's possible, we have a State of the City scheduled for next Tuesday. I would love to be able to get these into the presentation. It would be much better with an electronic copy than trying to scan these.
Sure.
Thank you. All righty, discussion items. We have a calendar and meeting scheduling. Mr. Cobb, why don't I turn this over to you?
Thank you, Mayor. During your February 16th meeting, you expressed some concerns regarding individual meetings versus discussion topics at work sessions. During the discussion, the council's preference was that we would start having work sessions. Also, council's preference was that we would have work sessions during the week of city council meetings. And so you asked the clerk if she would put together a tentative calendar that would show you how that the meetings, the work sessions could occur during, on the same week as the council meetings. The calendar was provided as an attachment to your memorandum. When we got into looking at the different months, it appeared that Thursday was the day that had the least amount of scheduling conflicts, and so we would recommend that. The other part of council's consensus was that the work sessions would be scheduled for 6:30 PM rather than the normal 5:30. One of the things that we did, would like to ask you tonight, is right now, your budget work sessions, which were scheduled before this, are scheduled at 5:30, so we would like to know if you'd like us to move those to 6:30 as well. And remember, Mr. Britton, it would work better with his, with his schedule. But tonight, we're here to get your direction regarding the scheduling of the work sessions. And if you have any questions, we're here, we're available to help.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Let me just call on Councilman Britton first, and we'll, we'll see on the scheduled start times. It is generally harder for you to make it back. Are you okay on the budget for them to start that at 5:30? Do you have those in your calendar already?
Yeah, we can, I can do those. It's just, in general, it'd be nice to be able to get home and change and re-decompress a little bit before coming down here for some of these long workshops.
All right. Does council, I don't think we had any objection to that last time, did we?
How does that affect staff and being here and stuff?
There won't be any impact.
Okay. All righty. How about now for open discussion, the calendar, the way it was presented. Why don't I just start with Councilman Britton, and we'll just kind of go up and down the desk.
I looked at it, and the one thing I noticed that there's a lot of work sessions on the same weeks as council that also coincide with Calno meetings and other, other things. So that, that's why I was kind of lobbying for 5:30 or work sessions on the same nights as a council meeting, and we, that we can manage our time well and get in and out. I know for a budget meeting, that's probably not doable, so that, you know, I'm willing to make that concession. But if we have a little work session for, I don't know, something that's basically for information that they can get in and brief us, that's not decisional, maybe we can do that on the, on the Monday nights before we have the council meeting.
Or maybe they can just put those on as discussion items.
Or discussion items.
It's hard to get here and have a meeting, just my personal opinion, have a meeting and go into another meeting. I'd rather, if there's something.
It's just informational, and just make a presentation before, you know, at the beginning of the meeting, or like you said, it is a discussion item.
Councilman, when are Calno meetings? The third week?
They're the, the first Wednesday of the month, so our, our meetings are the first Monday of the month.
Oh, I see. I see. So, Mr. Cobb, can we make an effort on months that you need a work session? Because we're certainly not going to need two a month, I would assume. But can we make every effort to not have them on the first week of a Calno?
Yeah, the third week is usually open. I do, I do see a CSBG meeting here, but that's not a big deal.
I mean, I can understand that. I mean, you know, and then also on that Thursday, usually the first Thursday of the month is Metro Plan, Chamber Luncheon, it would be, for myself, it would be a whole day of What do you feel, Councilman Hackett?
I was gonna say, you've got so much going on, so just don't do work sessions that first week.
Do them on Thursdays.
And, and the 5:30, 6:00, 5:30, 6:30, I could do either one. I like 6:30 better, but if everybody's good at 5:30.
Councilman Schenck?
You know, with all the special, the budget meetings and everything, to me, it's just easier. Just take the fourth Monday, call it a work session for the rest of whatever. We've got one, two, three, four of them already planned, and then just use every other one and just say, you know what, those are work sessions on the fourth, the last Monday of the month, rather than, you know, come in twice during that week and then that Monday. Now we're going to put one on a Monday, Thursday, Monday.
These are only tentative. This isn't necessarily.
Well, either way, that's what I'm saying. They're still going to be tentative, but you're going, if you have them, it's Monday, Thursday, Monday. Monday, Thursday, Monday.
So your suggestion is if we already have one scheduled for a Monday, add an item onto it?
No, I'm just saying, get rid of all these Thursdays and just make the fourth Monday a work session. And if we don't need it, we don't need it. But why add this?
I think the issue with the deputy mayor was then we were tying up multiple.
Multiple week, yeah.
Still are. I, I understand, but we got that second one, we got that second one out, and we're good. I.
I see you. Why don't we just see how it works?
Okay.
So, Mr. Cobb, it sounds like what I'm hearing from everybody. Let me get up to the microphone. I'm sorry. What, what I'm hearing is we're going to not do them the first week of the month. We will try it out on the third week of the month, and we are going to start them at 6:30, see how that works. And if at all possible, when we have them scheduled for Mondays, as Councilman Schenck has already mentioned, even though their budget is something else, you know, if you could use that for something brief and quick, let's use that rather than calling everybody down for another meeting.
We can do that.
All righty. Does that about wrap it up for everybody?
Sure.
Mayor, could I get clarification on the budget hearings? Did you want to keep them at 5:30 or move them to 6:30?
I think Councilman Britton said he already has them in his calendar, so he has made accommodations for them.
Okay, thank you.
Is that correct, Councilman Britton? Is there anything else on the workshop meeting schedule? Councilman Hackett requests 2:00 AM, since he is just starting his night shift at that time. It's going to be very lonely for him here, but I'm sure we can turn the lights on. Let's see, we have no other items on the agenda this evening, so now we're going to go on to city manager's report and then city attorney's report. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. Only have one item. Tomorrow night is the city government night for the Community Police Academy, starting at 6:00 PM. It'll be held in the Cop Center, so just wanted to give you that reminder. And we have all the directors there giving the presentation, and I'd love to have you all there as well to tell the folks about city council.
No problem. I'm going to bring the 40-slide State of the City. Give it a dry run.
No. Can I go first?
What's that?
The indoor fireworks only. Only have indoor fireworks, not the outdoors.
That's all I have, Mayor.
That's all you have? Mr. Groot?
I have nothing.
I'm sorry, Mr. Groot, nothing?
Nothing.
Wow. I like it. All righty, moving on to communications and reports. I am up first. We had the State of the County Luncheon a couple of weeks ago. It was very well attended, and the presentation was very well done by Chairman Carey. So that, that was a, a nice event to be at. We had some staff members there, and I hope everybody enjoyed the presentation. I, I really need those awards for the State of the City, but we'll talk about that later. Also, the same day, we had the grand opening of a new restaurant here in town, Oishi Japanese Steakhouse, was over at the mall. You know, that's another one, if you haven't tried it, I'd certainly recommend going over there and seeing what they're all about. They're in the old RJ Gator's spot, which is on the back entrance to the theater side. Where is Dr. Carrera? Dr. Carrera, we have been awarded the Healthy Weight Award again. Could you just come on up and tell everybody with that brief intro on what that's all about? You've done all the work on this. You've incorporated it all into our comprehensive plan. We went down and we, we, they presented the award to myself, but I insisted that you come up and receive it as well. So, because you've done all the work. You are the champion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I just compiled the information, right? The work is done by all the staff and different departments, because it compiles all the information from parks and recreation, from public works, from development services. And this is an award, this was an initiative from the General Surgeon from the state of Florida, and to recognize cities that have in their policies guidelines and incentives to provide a healthier environment. So there is now this idea that physical planning is also, has an impact on the health of people, lifestyles, and how we plan cities, and how friendly they are for pedestrians, for, you know, bikers. I mean, that would stimulate people to have a healthier life. So that started last year. We engaged with the other, other cities to apply for this award, so we were awarded last year, and we got the same award, you know, in 2015. So we are proud of that, and moving on.
Doesn't that Healthy Weight Award have a criteria that the mayor be of a healthy weight?
Well, then we are, we are getting that too, so that is, that is a.
Get it.
Yeah. That's, that, that was the award.
I just wanted to thank you for making sure that I got to the event with you.
Okay.
And it was a, a nice night to receive it, and also the, the movie that they showed us, The Raising of America.
The Raising of America, yes.
Everybody needs to watch that movie, but that's another topic for another night. Anything else for Dr. Carrera on the award? And I believe the plaque is around City Hall somewhere. Do you have it in your office?
Yes, it's.
There you go, deservedly so. Put it up in Development Services.
You know, and I, I'll just give props to my two brothers over here, you know, with this initiative. I mean, both of them have lost, you know, 30, 40 pounds each and do, I mean, they look great. So, you know, they've motivated lots of people to, to do the thing. So you guys be commended for that, and you'll live a little longer.
And actually, Human Resources is also doing a great job with our wellness committee, and we are also starting, you know, and I, I highlighted that in the application, that the city is starting with their own employees, showing how to have a healthier, you know.
Oh, now, there's, there isn't there a 5K? What's on?
Yes, there will be a 5K in April 11th, and everybody's invited to participate.
That's amongst the other cities, right? The team.
And we'll be competing with other cities to, they will recognize the city that has the, the largest.
Where is that at?
It will be Seminole County.
I think it's up at Seminole.
I forwarded the email.
Yeah, I got, I sent it to my other address.
Great. Well, thank you, Dr. Carrera. Also, over the last two weeks, we had the opening day for Babe Ruth and opening day for Little League. So all the baseball teams are out there in full force, right, Drew?
Sir.
Excellent. And how are those bathrooms working on the softball side?
Worked.
We have something coming to us during budget to consider? That would be nice. Thank you. Last but not least, next week on March 10th at 6:00 PM over at Oviedo High School, we will be having a council State of the City. I encourage everybody in the town or in the city to please come on out and see the State of the City presentation, Q and A with the entire council after the presentation, and everybody will see how this is all fitting together, because everybody sees little bits and pieces here and there. They grab ahold of us in Publix, they ask us a question here and there, but it's very difficult to see it comprehensively. And we do State of the Cities for many of the organizations, such as the Chambers, the Rotary Clubs, HOAs, when they invite us out, but this is the first time that we're actually doing one open to the public. So it's March 10th, starts at 6:00 PM with a, a public safety demonstration. And Drew, you're setting up in the, you're setting up there with a Parks and Rec demonstration also?
We're setting up.
That's what I mean, okay. So, starts, all of the present demonstrations start at 6:00 PM over at Oviedo High School on March 10th. State of the City will start at 7:00 PM promptly, because we, okay, and then we're going to start promptly at 7:00 PM, because we want to get through the PowerPoint presentation in about 40 minutes. It usually takes 45 minutes. That way, we've got 45 minutes for questions and answers with council, and get everybody heading home by 8:30. Absolutely, the latest will be 9 o'clock. Councilman Hicken, just remind me, Taste of Oviedo is Saturday, the 14th, over at the Oviedo Mall. That is one of the biggest events we have, I guess, next to Great Day, right, Chief? It would probably be Great Day first, then Taste of Oviedo as far as attendance goes, but neck and neck. I know the Chamber and all its volunteers are putting a lot of effort into it this year. They're having Cirque du Soleil or something, is that what they're having, Jeffrey? Something like that coming out?
Cirque du Soleil.